Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. Welcome to our work session today, April 25th. And I would ask my council members to please roll call electronically.
Five members of city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam interim city manager, Ms. Terry, you have the floor.
And I don't want her job, okay. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of city council and Portsmouth family. Our first presentation this evening is going to be from Starbase Victory. Ms. Lisa Downey Hood is going to approach the podium and I'll meet you there so I can kind of...
Actually, I'm gonna go first.
Okay. Sir, could you please state your name?
I will do that.
Not Lisa. Thank you.
So, good afternoon or evening. Most of you know me, but for those who don't, I'm Bill Hayden. I founded the program Starbase Victory here in Portsmouth 20 years ago. Lisa and I are here to talk to you about the future of Starbase, but I'd like to give you just a couple of minutes of perspective about the program. Your Starbase program is truly unique. It's unique in Tidewater, it's unique in Virginia, and it's probably unique across the country. It's unique because we put every child in the Portsmouth Public School District through Starbase three times. Nobody else does that. Nobody else in the state, probably the country, does that. It's unique because we address STEM to elementary-age kids. Most other school systems start in middle school and certainly by high school, but getting the kids involved in elementary school is really important. We've been operating for 20 years now, 20,000 graduates. I don't know that we captured them all in STEM, but I can promise you that we exposed them all to STEM and gave them the opportunity to discover how important STEM is in their lives. The city has provided Starbase over the last 12 years with about $100,000. Thank you very much. We're here to ask for more, and in a moment, we'll tell you why. Finally, for those of you who have political aspirations, I would tell you that the last two mayors of Portsmouth and the current sitting mayor of Portsmouth were board members on the Starbase Board of Directors before they ever ran for mayor. So, think about it. We meet on the first Thursday of every month. I came to Portsmouth because I was invited by Dr. Trumbull 20 years ago, and I was encouraged by Elizabeth Daniels and Charles Whitehurst because all of us were interested in the future of the kids here in Portsmouth. I believe that the success of a city rests with its leadership and the future of the kids. That's why I came to Portsmouth, and that's why you have the Starbase Victory program. Your system already has a very, very good foundation for STEM and the workforce, future workforce of Starbase, but it's time now to expand the Starbase experience for your kids. We're going to talk to you, Lisa is... I turned over the job of Executive Director back in December, and I am so happy that Lisa took our Lisa Downey Hood. I think you know her, and you're gonna hear from her actually twice tonight, once with a Starbase shirt on and once with her red jacket on. We want to bring Starbase up from elementary school through middle school and have it join with the CTE program that is starting up this year. I think it is a wonderful idea. I'm gonna remain on the board, I'm gonna keep her honest promise, and I'd like to introduce you, if you haven't met her already, to Lisa Downey Hood, the new Executive Director of Starbase. She's gonna talk to you about this new program called Refresh. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. I will be very quick and very to the point. So, as you heard, the great history of Starbase, we are talking now about a Refresh program. And this Refresh program will extend the pipeline of STEM from 4th grade where we currently exist all the way through high school. So, let's talk upfront. What Starbase will do is align our STEM Pathways Program, tying it into our CTE program, again, to create a pipeline from grade four all the way through graduation. It's going to help us reshape the current Starbase program, making it more applicable to our students that we currently serve. It's gonna expand into the middle school, aligning with our discovery programs and our career exploration programs, and again, it's gonna tie into our career and technical programming. Now, why is that important? It's important because we need to start thinking about the model of education a little differently. We have a group of students who need to be ready for the workforce. Whether that workforce is in maritime industry, whether that workforce is in computer-aided manufacturing, in wind, solar, air, in new port technologies, in my beloved Norfolk Naval Shipyard right down the street, or the exciting new technologies that the River Casino brings, STEM is all over the place in Portsmouth and in the Hampton Roads area. So, our current pathway pipeline, we focus, as you see, on the elementary, which exposes the students to areas in STEM. But sometimes we lose them because by the time they get through career exploration and into thinking about what they want to do in high school, they may have missed that opportunity about what was it that I liked in the STEM? What was it like that I liked about science? What intrigued me about math? I will tell you a little story. I'm an engineer by degree, and I hate math. Did that go on record? But I love to figure out how things work. I love to solve problems. So, my love for engineering did not necessarily come out of a love for math, but I understood the importance of involving math into my engineering equation. And those are the kinds of ties that we want to make with the community and with the students. So, we want to expand our current program from elementary to middle school into the high school with cohorts that can look at advanced manufacturing, engineering technologies, improve computer science capabilities, and other non-traditional careers that you would not consider. Of course, Portsmouth and Hampton Roads being maritime industry, I can tell you today as a former Executive Director of Norfolk Naval Shipyard, we are in dire need of those trade skills. We in dire need of welders, of painters, of ship fitters, and we have a community base right here in our students, and we're not picking them out of Portsmouth, and we have the capability to do that. And so, our CTE programs and other programs help us to get ready for that, but imagine if we could start practicing that and planting those seeds when they're in elementary school. And it's not ending, it's a beginning, because from there, they could go into maritime industry, and there they could go back to Tidewater Community College and go to institutions of higher learning. So, we really want to create a pipeline of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and all those careers that come associated with it. Typically, we don't think about how those careers come out, but every part of you, and I would challenge you to think about this, every part of something that we do has a STEM component, and so we want to expand on that STEM component. So, some of the rationale, as we talked about, we've got a long and grateful history with Starbase and the Portsmouth Public School System, and I applaud you for fully funding. I saw the proposal, so I already know that you are advocates for our students and in the school. What we're asking for today is actually above and beyond that, and this is not a directly school-source funding. You would be supporting the funding of Starbase to help get the outfitting and equipment that we will need, and you'll see that in the budget, and hopefully you saw that in the read-ahead that I provided to you. We, again, traditionally talk about maritime industry, but there is so much more industry that's coming to the Hampton Roads area. There's so much economic development, and all of the resources, sources tell us that they are heavily, gonna be heavily impacted by STEM careers, somewhere to the tune of 8,000 new jobs coming in the workforce over the next few years. We want our students in Portsmouth to be ready to receive those jobs, and we want to start planting those seeds and continue that pipeline. Again, we want to foster that communication and that collaboration with our students. Not every child will go to maybe choosing a STEM career, but I guarantee you, every child will be impacted by what STEM has to offer. So, bottom line, I want a million dollars. No, not really. But I'll settle for $300,000. That's my ask for today. I figured I'd get the shock and awe out of the way. We're asking for the $300,000, very simple if you look at the budget request. It helps us to outfit year one. If you noticed in the budget that we submitted to you, there is a line cost for all of the public school system, which they're often committed to trying to fund, and then the line item cost for the things that we at Starbase are trying to fund. You probably, many of you probably know that we went to the General Assembly, we asked for 4.6 million dollars. We didn't get 4.6 million dollars. We're going back next year, and we're gonna ask for 4.6 million dollars because we want the Go Tech Bus here, we want to extend our fab labs here, and again, we want to create a comprehensive pipeline for our students. Part of asking for this 300,000 today is to fortify the city's commitment, which you've already been an advocate for, showing the rest of the Hampton Roads community, the General Assembly, and the federal dollars that we intend to go after, that our city is solely behind us in addition to our business community. So, yes, we're out there asking the community as well to help us in this endeavor. Again, this would fund year one for the outfitting costs in our fab labs, our med labs, our eco labs, and the other areas that we want to start to enhance and enroll in our phases. Again, it fortifies our support from you, the city, and the community to move us forward in the STEM presentation. And with that, I will end my presentation. Again, I'll take a million, I'll settle for 300,000, subject to any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hood. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and to think it's been 20 years since this has been initiated. I think I had just gotten on the school board and Dr. Stuckwich and got the program in place. I do have a question regarding the teachers. There's always been a challenge in getting math and science teachers. How will you be able to overcome that challenge with expanding the program when we see that challenge is present across the country?
Thank you for the question, Dr. Whitaker. I will tell you, that continues to be a challenge, and I'll be very transparent. One of the things we want to do is have the opportunity to offer retention and professional development that's above and beyond what the school system offers. In our more, I don't think I provided all the detail to that, but a professional development academy aimed at helping our teachers come in and strengthen their skill sets, but also to take non-career educators, maybe instructor from the Naval Shipyard, and developing them in the career path of being an educator that would take that technical skill set and then train them to be educators so that we can put them into the field. So, we're trying to look at some innovative ways, out-of-box thinking, if you will, and how we would try to attract more. Another example is going to Norfolk State or Hampton or ODU and tying into early internships with the students so that we could be able to offer them, with the support of the school system, a job upon graduation. So, we would lock them in, get their teacher training now, and so they would do their residency training, if you will, and so when they're ready to graduate, we would be able to bring them into the school system.
Right. Yeah, that's something that I think we can tap into more, the local universities and those students that I'm majoring in. I know students love internships where they can get paid and help with their college expenses, and so I hope that's something that we really look into. The other is coming through this expanded STEM and connecting it to CTE. Will there be any certifications, additional certifications that will come out of this so that students will be able to present that to the job market?
Short answer is yes, sir. We're looking to do all of the advanced certifications, we're looking to do all of the industry certifications, and so tying in with them will help us to expand those programs, and we'll be able to...
Are you able to be a little more specific as far as which certifications you're looking to have as a result of expanding the program?
I would initially tell you that we've looked at some of the maritime industries, like the welding certifications, the things that would be needed for ship repair. We've not fully exhausted that list yet, so I couldn't provide more detail beyond that, but things that would get into more workforce development, definitely working with the naval shipyards and the other maritime industry in the area, we would look for those certifications.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in beyond just shipyard certifications, because there's so much, so many opportunities available beyond the shipyard that I believe our students could take advantage of with those types of certifications. I think we presently have welding.
We do. And I was only using that as an example. It is our intention to, we've been talking to Centerra, we've been talking to Bon Secour, you know, we've been talking to other industries. I just met today with the Community Outreach Director for Rivers Casino. So, we're looking to be able to establish those partnerships long-range so we can, you know, look into those kinds of certifications, absolutely.
Right, because my concern is that it just not be a one-track type program into the shipyard. I mean, shipyard has excellent opportunities, but there are also other opportunities out here beyond that.
Absolutely. And I would further add to that with the wind, solar programs, the port authority. I mean, there's so much more than just the maritime industry, and so we're looking to expand into those areas.
So, when you come up with these additional certifications, can you communicate that to council?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Lisa Downey Hood, for the presentation. This sparked a question or concern. I see that Norfolk State is here, and I know that they have a Denimis program. Didn't know if some of those mentorships could be an opportunity for students to come in and be part of that teacher loss or lack of instructors that you would have there, if you would consider that. I don't know if any of the other universities have a program like the Denimis program, but that was one option that came to mind.
So, I'm happy to report to you that the Chair of our Board, Dr. Alicia McLean, is also the Chair in Charge of Denimis, and so we actually are in communication with using her and her team as an example, but we want to extend the same courtesies over to Hampton University. We want to talk with Christopher Newport News, excuse me, Old Dominion and Tidewater, so we want to target all of those. But the answer is yes. We're definitely wanting to look at those because those would be the ones that are already in the science and mathematic pipeline and would be able to come in and integrate into the education system. But I do want to go back to the importance of being able to use what they call second career choicers, and so someone like myself, well, I retired at a very early age, somebody like myself that would want to go look at a second career, and then having that program where I would then be able to come onboard and get trained and, you know, studied as an educator so that I could know how to manage myself effectively in a classroom, but I'd bring a level of subject matter expertise, you know, to that area.
Great. And one final question. I know that there are no other localities, Chesapeake, Hampton, that have this kind of a program, and this is just for our Portsmouth students. I didn't know if there was an opportunity for students to come from other localities, and then maybe that would be an additional stream of support, maybe another school system could help fund if we allow maybe their 6th to 10th graders or some, you know, or pick a group of students that could come, you know, because I know a lot of people come to our Children's Museum, and that's an opportunity, but this is another type of training opportunity, and we could probably look at their school boards or their city councils for funding if their students were allowed to attend.
Yeah, I think that's excellent feedback. Thank you, ma'am. I will tell you that outside of the regular pipeline, we offer community outreach opportunities like our summer camps and our after-school, so that would be an area we could possibly examine, but it would require a level of interaction with the school systems and the logistics. Sometimes we're even challenged with our, you know, own students and getting one there, but we're always able to successfully work that out, so we would have to look at the logistics of that.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Downey Hood, thanks for the presentation. Admiral Hayden, thanks for being here this evening and getting us caught up on 20 years of Starbase history. Couple of things to share, no questions, just a couple of points to make. As I've been wandering around Hampton Roads, meeting with folks in the workforce development arena, one of the things that I keep hearing is we have programs and we're struggling to get kids to enroll in those programs. And so, one of the things that I think is important about this STEM pathway, today, Starbase hits 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, and then suddenly there's a gap until CTE picks up, picks back up in 11th grade. And so, this futures program offers an opportunity to keep the kids excited about pursuing the pathway. If you can go back to the STEM pathway slide, please. So, a couple of points to make that maybe address what Dr. Whitaker was asking about. So, kind of right there in the middle, there are three Starbase academies in this plan. One of those Starbase academies is dedicated to manufacturing and engineering, so shipyard folk, but the one in the middle is environmental sciences, the one on the bottom is health sciences, and then the next box over where it talks about career and technical education. So, you can see there some of the areas where CTE is working today, some of the areas where CTE wants to be able to work in the future and leverage the STEM education that kids are gonna get, starting in 4th grade and now all the way through 10th grade before they roll into the CTE arena. So, cybersecurity certs, huge market for that these days. Pharmacy tech, it doesn't mention certified nursing assistants, but that's a certification that we're doing in our CTE programs today. Ms. Downey Hood mentioned that Starbase went to the General Assembly looking to fund the entire program. One of the questions that Starbase got from the General Assembly was, how committed is the city to support? And so, I think by plugging this into our budget proposal for this year, it's a way for them to go back to the General Assembly next year, showing that the city is committed to the tune of a million dollars? Oh, no, $300,000. Sorry, sorry there, Madam City Manager. I know she gave you a heart attack, so I... Anyway, so those are the points I want to make, and I appreciate that you're here tonight on Delta night, and I'm full-on board. It's the right thing to do for our kids.
Ma'am, I do have one question for you. Wonderful program that I'd support 100%. Are there any, do you guys have any provisions or accommodations for special needs children in the program?
That's a good question. I'm gonna say because we work with the school systems that we have, but to be perfectly transparent, I'm not as sure about our summer camps, so Mr. Hayden is gonna come up here and help me out on that one.
Welcome back, Admiral.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The answer to that question is that the Starbase program we are operating today, 4th, 5th, and 6th grades, is particularly valuable for the disadvantaged. The reason is, it's a hands-on program. It isn't testing, it isn't that sort of thing, and those kids go far beyond what their tutors and instructors actually expected of them. Starbase is exactly what they need. And I'd like to turn to Dr. Whitaker for just a moment, because if you could throw me off the stage. The certification process really is a question for Dr. Bracy. The purpose and goal of Starbase is to inspire the kids. As Admiral Hugel said, my goal when I first founded the program was to inoculate the kids against the fear of math and science, because we all know they do get hard as you get older and move through the system. Starbase's goal and objective, our mission statement, is to inspire the kids to seek more STEM activities. And that's why, as Admiral Hugel said, we want to move up into the 7th and 8th grades to continue what we're doing so that the seed corn that goes into the CTE program that provides those certifications, the seed corn is a much bigger population.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Good to see you, Admiral. I understand what you're saying, and I think that as it initiated 20 years ago and at the level of the elementary school, that was definitely needed, that you have to inspire those kids, overcome some of their fears, uncertainties. But as it's expanding into where we're looking to take it ultimately into high school, that inspiration hopefully would have been grounded at the elementary level, and now as we progress at the high school level, what is it that we're putting in their hand that they can step out of here, industry-ready, competitive, that might open additional doors? So, I agree.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make the distinction that Starbase is the lead-in to the CTE program where those certifications will actually exist. We want to whet the sponge so that it jumps into one of those areas that will be provided in high school. Sorry, Lisa.
Seeing no further questions from my colleagues, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Yes, I will now present the 2024 Proposed Budget Retirement Initiatives. After question-and-answer session, ARPA status update, and then Mr. Trey Burke will provide information associated with items for the 2024 Proposed Budget. I will be presenting from the podium, if it pleases council.
Please move forward, ma'am.
Good evening again, council, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Portsmouth family, and council members. So, tonight, we're gonna go through some items for the proposed budget, which are there. Again, we have some, I've had some requests. That's how these items made it into the proposed budget. So, I'm bringing these forth to council tonight so that we can address, identify, and council can provide direction on how they would allow me to move forward as it relates to the budget. So, we're gonna start with two things as we are talking about the proposed budget for retirement initiatives. There have been two initiatives that have been with Portsmouth back and forth as it relates to the legacy system. When I say legacy system, I want to be clear on what that is. The city of Portsmouth has three retirement systems. Two are closed, and one is still active. The two closed systems, as you will hear me say, legacy systems, are your Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Systems and your Fire and Police Retirement Plan Systems. Those two systems are closed. The Virginia Retirement System is still active. There can be no new membership into the two closed systems, but however, we still have employees within that system. Right now, we have 10 current active employees. We have 953 employees that are, not employees, retirees, and we have 50 retirees who are retired but have not started receiving their payments from the system. So, what we're gonna do first is talk about the supplemental. Each, so that we're clear, council received a request about, well, city manager, interim city manager received a request during this budget, proposed budget, for $1,500 to be paid for supplement for the retirees. We used to call it bonus. We used to call it bonus, but we're not going to call it a bonus. We're going to call it a one-time supplement. The reason this is a one-time supplement is because there is an ordinance that was done that said, notwithstanding or foregoing, blah, 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 if the system is not funded at 80% of the actuarial value, then there will be no COLA increases. What is a COLA increase? Of cost of living wage increases for our retirees. The reason they stopped doing it is because the system was running short. In other words, we were running into a problem where we weren't able to fund the account, or we saw in the future, if we continued down that path, we would not be able to fund that retirement system. So, counsel made a decision not to put any COLA increases into the system for the retirees, but to ensure that we could pay any retiree who retired out of the system, who retired from the city of Portsmouth, we can make sure they received a paycheck or a retirement check. That was the purpose. Now, understanding, counsel understands as years go on, there are some things that happen, and we want to provide our retirees with something. So, counsel decided during budget seasons, that they would then give a one-time bonus slash supplement, just in good faith to say, look, we understand the growing needs, we understand inflation, we understand that there are some things that we may be able to help you with, because there is an ordinance that we can no longer give you a COLA increase until the actuarial or until the value of the system is at 80%. We want to do something. So, counsel did. They gave one-time increases during the certain budget years. Last year, we did not. So, what we propose this year is a one-time $1,500 increase for, not increase, a one-time $1,500 payment for our retirees. In doing that, the retirees that are currently in the system, 953 of them, will receive the $1,500, if that is the desire of counsel. This gives everyone the opportunity, not a selected group, not someone who got something before, but everyone in the system currently. So, I'm not going to ask, I'm going to come back to this, but I'm bringing this forth because we have budgeted for it. We did put it in the budget this year. So, all I'm asking at some point, because it's proposed, I'm bringing these things to you to get consensus of how you want me to move forward, if you want me to change it, if you want to reduce it, because again, or do nothing for it at all. So, now, the reason I did that separately, because we are talking about something different. During the course of the proposed budget, or prior to the proposed budget leading into the presentation of the budget, I was asked if we could do something for the Health Retirement Arrangement. You will hear me speak to that as an HRA. That is a health savings plan that we had for retirees in the legacy system and VRS. So, let me give you just a little bit of history on that, because it started way before I got here this time. So, the Health Reimbursement Agreement, known as the HRS, HRA, is a counsel-approved health insurance supplement plan, which became effective April 1st, 2015. The reason it is, I say counsel-approved, because there is no ordinance for that. Every year, if it is counsel's desire to continue their plan, it would have to be an approved budget. It is no ordinance for it. It has to be approved through your budget. What is supplemental insurance? The counsel contributed funds to offset some of the health insurance costs for eligible employees from the Portsmouth Fire and Police, F and P, the Portsmouth Supplemental, and Virginia Retirement System. The reason this came about is because the city used to carry retirees on their health insurance beyond 65. So, now, they said, in order to transition those people off of our health insurance, 2015, 2016, they said, we'll give you in the budget this $1,400, so that you can help transition. They allowed everybody to apply, but everybody was not Medicare-eligible at the time. So, out of the people that were able at that time, or when they extended the program, 317 people ended up being in the program. So, out of the 317 people, they continued to, the city continued to budget for it and plan for it and had this program. Well, it was the opposite. Okay. So, basically, what happened in 2021, they did not budget for it anymore for fiscal year 2022, because last year was the first year we didn't have it. So, at some point, they had come back and said, we were going to reduce this benefit. It was going to be a 25% reduction. So, they want to start it, they started at 1,400. It was supposed to be a 25% reduction every year until it zeroed out. I have, I've seen letters and everything. Somewhere along the line in 2017, counsel must have made a decision not to do it that year. So, instead of phasing the program out, they budgeted to continue the program. So, again, as a reminder, it would have to be a budgeted item every year for approval. So, when they finished it up in 2021, 2022, it ended. We did not budget for it in '22. The reason it was $1,400 is because the average expense is $2,800. They just took it in half and gave that as a supplement. Now, the city, it cost the city $443,000 for the 317 retirees. Again, those are the ones who were in the program. Since then, I'm sure other retirees have retired and are over now 65. But based on the request, they will not be allowed to get into the system. It was only for a short period of time of eligibility from '15 to '16, and they shut it down. You couldn't come back, you couldn't try to get back in the, get in the program. It was a date set where you could apply. Once that was over, it was done, and we've carried the 317 up until counsel ended the program. So, the other with that, the reason I budgeted for the one-time was simply because I understand, and we all have been dealing with inflation. We've all been dealing with high-cost increases. We cannot give them a COLA increase based on the ordinance. And right now, the system, and we all have been tracking the market, lost money. So, instead of 80%, we're at 67%, 68%. So, again, we are not fully funded in our retirement system. So, this was a way to say, we see you, we hear you, we're going to do something for you to help fight inflation. Now, the reason I, and again, I didn't support the Health Retirement Agreement, is because it is, as, let me just say, it's up to city council to make a decision. I just didn't think it was equitable. I didn't think it was equitable to carry 317 people, because they met this timeframe at the time. I think it's leaving out the ones who are now eligible but can't get in it. It only gives it to 317. The one-time gives it to everybody. So, what I'm asking today, or what I'm proposing for counsel today, is this information. I'm here to give you the options, the information. Counsel has to determine what direction they will have me to go. But the information is the key. So, that's why I'm providing that to you now, because again, we budgeted for 1,500. So, it is the desire of counsel that would direct me. But I wanted to make sure you had information and why I had one and not the other proposed. Okay, so I am open for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Whitaker, sure you have the floor?
Yes, Ms. Terry. We've had this conversation quite a bit, and I know in the past that you have not recommended either of these, actually. There are some disparities that we discovered in the process as far as who was benefiting and who was not benefiting, which everyone has not been privy to that information. The issue behind, and these are two separate plans, per se. The first one, this retirement plan that you have outlined on page two. And so that the citizens and those listening are aware of what we're dealing with, let me make sure that we're clear. There was an opportunity for these retirees to become a part of the Virginia Retirement System?
Yes.
Okay. And in lieu of that, they made a decision to forego the Virginia Retirement System and to be a part of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Fire and Police?
Yes, sir.
Now, also, it's interesting that when we looked at this before, the persons who I typically see coming before counsel requesting this are of a different socioeconomic status. For those who are of a higher economic status who benefited from this, you don't hear from them. And I think that what has not been transparent in this process is that I believe that this system was used for the benefit of a few, while incorporating and making it appear to be for the benefit of others, which now is why we're at this point we are today, where persons are saying, hey, this isn't benefiting me. But those in higher socioeconomic statuses who are part of these two programs, you don't ever see them coming before counsel, because they don't need to, because they use a portion of this city employees to get a benefit for themselves. And I just want to make that clear, so that when persons come in here and they're speaking, notice the socioeconomic status of those who are speaking. You don't see the ones who were in higher positions coming here speaking. And so, I just want to put that out there, because you're putting us in a position now to try to clean up something that was inequitable from the beginning. And so, I know we have, and I know you've labored over this, and we've had discussions on this over the years, and I respect your position on it, and I'm not in favor of continuing inequity. The other portion of this, the retirement, the health insurance, has some of the same issues in it, that you're finding that persons are getting a supplement while others were not even aware that the supplement existed. And so, I'm not in favor, and I understand the issues of the environment at this time, but there's just an underlying inequity that is here, that I believe people have been used in this system at the benefit of others, and that's why you don't see those others coming down here frequently asking for these increases. They have used others, they have benefited off it. And so, I don't, your recommendation, is it still your recommendation that you've given us in the past?
Yes.
Okay. And that is to not fund either?
So, definitely not HRA. Again, I'm here to do, be directed based on whatever counsel says. The only reason this year I would even consider the one-time is because I understand the impact of the economy right now. And I looked at it as just being fair to, because again, they don't receive COLA increases, even though it was their choice. I looked at it as being fair across the board for everyone, because I recognize, I understand, we're living it every day. So, that was why I suggested, or well, I didn't suggest it, why the recommendation was leaning more on that side of the 1,500.
And you know, these conversations were going on before COVID. So, it's not just a COVID conversation that has, COVID issue that has allowed this conversation to begin again. And it's going to, it's going to occur again after this. And so, I'm just, I know that, you know, you have labored over this, and your recommendation and what you shared is still clear and vivid. So, thank you.
Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Terry, for the historical update that you provided. And I was here when HRA was established. I think you left out one point. It was a two-pronged thing. You mentioned it reduced the city's liability, but you failed to mention that it reduced the city's liability to the tune of about $12 million. And the people in the system, those 65 and older, they didn't have a choice. They were pushed out of the city's healthcare system. So, it's not like they could have stayed and benefited from it at all. So, I think that's an important factor, because $12 million savings was on the back of those 65 years and older. And for seven years, councils had funded the HRA. And you are right, that each year, that had to be readdressed. And for seven budget years, councils did that in the affirmative. But come May of 2021, even though it was in the budget at that time, in the proposed budget, counsel at that time decided not to fund it, for whatever reason. But tonight doesn't have to be either or. I think you've outlined the options, and the $1,500, I prefer to call it a stipend. But whatever you call it, is $1,500 that I think our retirees probably could make good use of, given this hyperinflationary times that we're in. But it can be two-pronged, because we can fund the HRA, and I would recommend that being kicked off in January of 2024, to buy some time. And the other piece of that, that I think is important, I think it should be on a use-or-lose basis. In other words, if they get $1,400, your medical bill's only $800, then the $600 goes back in the general fund. Before, that was not the case. But I think it's extremely important. I don't think the people that are speaking on behalf of HRA, we've had a former city manager before come to this council and speak in support of that, because he knew people needed it. We have retirees that, when they retired, unfortunately, their salaries weren't substantial. In some cases, they were below the minimum wage. So, that $1,400 to offset medical expense is extremely important to them. And I think it's incumbent on this council. Now, you mentioned, you referred to it as a healthcare reimbursement arrangement. Actually, when it was kicked off, it was called a healthcare reimbursement agreement. There's a big difference between arrangement and agreement. I might arrange to go see a movie with someone. That's an arrangement, but an agreement has more teeth to it. And as you know, in the state of Virginia, an agreement can be an oral agreement. Doesn't necessarily have to be signed. But I think for this council, I think we need to honor what was a moral agreement to these retirees. And yeah, the system was And, yeah, the system was closed, I think, in a short period of time, but also the Portsmouth Supplemental System was closed. Also, the police and fire system, that was closed as well. So, you know, those 65 years and older, they couldn't help it. They didn't set the rules. They were affected by the rules, but they didn't set them. So, tonight, I think we need to correct what was probably a wrong and reestablish that with the idea that each exceeding council would have to validate it. And like I said previously, it needs to be on a use or lose basis. But thank you for getting back with some of the historical information.
Well, that's a good segue because you did mention something I wanted to be clear with so that since we're putting the information out. The city took on a $261 million pension obligation bond to cover the system that was really bankrupt in the city. The $12 million that we speak of in savings was because we had retirees receiving the same amount of insurance rates that our active employees were. So, it was literally bankrupt in the city because they could then move to Medicare because they were Medicare eligible. So, unfortunately, to satisfy that group or the legacy system retirees, we not only took them out because they were Medicare eligible, we took out a $261 million bond so that we could fund the system so everybody could receive a check toward the end of their retirement or while they retired. And also, we did a social security supplement because remember, members were not paying social security. So, the city also used some of those funds to catch them up. So, when we say save $12 million, I just wanted to be clear when we were talking about history, why we were in that position to start with and why, how we got there. So, I just didn't want it to be, they saved us $12 million. They should, they were Medicare eligible, receiving the same health benefits. Even we've taken a step further because of our history. We have opened up an OPEB trust, council agreed. So, we have to put money in that OPEB trust to ensure that if anything happens, the city would have like a little savings to cover any supplemental health program for future. And so, we pay into that as well. So, we're constantly trying to ensure that we have money because that was really a requirement to cover healthcare costs because they continued to increase.
Well, thank you. And you weren't here when it was established, but, so you didn't set the rules at that time, and I'm not putting that on you.
Okay.
But by the same token, the employees that were 65 and older, they didn't have any input in it either. They were just shown the door and shoved out of the door. So, but anyway, council will have to, at the end of the day, decide what to do.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Terry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Madam City Manager, for the history lesson. Thanks, Councilman Moody, for the history lesson. As a new guy, this has not been an easy one for me because I like to go back and do homework. And in the course of going back and doing homework, I didn't find a whole lot written down about how we got here. So, a lot of the homework has been gathering hearsay and trying to understand really how we got here. I appreciate, you said the $1,500, whatever we're calling the $1,500 thing, goes to all the retirees in those systems, and it's the fair thing to do. Those are your words. I agree with you. Given kind of how the economy's been going, to give them a $1,500 boost at this time seems to make sense. I wondered when we started the discussion, should it be a percentage? But then it became clear, $1,500 helps those who are on the low end of the scale much more percentage-wise than somebody at the top end of the scale. And so, having a dollar number instead of a percentage number makes sense to me, and $1,500, I'm sure, will be appreciated by all those retirees. Regarding the HRA, the interesting thing about the HRA to me was, while I couldn't find a lot of history about how it got put in place or the decisions on who the 317 were that opted in and who the other folks were that opted to go in a different direction, what I did find was, as Councilman Moody mentioned, year after year after year, that $1,400 was reapproved by city council as part of the budgeting process. And so, somewhere along the way, somebody said, well, this was really intended to be a transition to help those folks transition to Medicare, transition to a supplement, and then transition into some other plan that didn't involve the city helping to pay the bill. But I don't see anything that suggests anybody told the retirees that were involved that it was a transition. And so, given that we did it seven years in a row, and then we suddenly stopped doing it without any advance warning, seems to me the fair thing to do for those folks is to put it back. And then, if we want to put it back this year and then alert folks, okay, now we're alerting you, this is a transition, and we're giving you this year to figure out how to transition out of this arrangement into some other Medicare supplemental plan that you can afford so that the city doesn't have to pay the bill. I'd be amenable to doing something like that, but I think the fair thing to do for those folks this year is to restore the $1,400 payment to, as Councilman Moody said, to earmark it for healthcare expenses. So, the $1,500, if you need a new set of tires on your car, great. The $1,400 doesn't go to buy tires. It goes to buy medical care because, as we talked about, one is a retirement benefit, the other is a healthcare benefit. And so, offering that help to pay for supplemental healthcare insurance and then to cover $1,400 or up to $1,400 in medical bills seems to me to be the right approach to deal with, with that part of the expense. So, I appreciate your insight in all this, and I know you all have wrestled before I ever got here. I'm now in the tussle myself, and it's not an easy, there's no clear best answer for a lot of reasons. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Terry, for the presentation. I think we all are looking at this information, and it was before the council, before all of us, except for Councilman Moody, was here. So, we're having to address the information. Of course, I appreciate you putting the 1,500 in for all retirees. I think that will give them an opportunity to get that boost that they do need. And as far as the HRA, whether it was an agreement or unwritten handshake or whatever it is, it was there. It was provided. You did mention in part of your presentation that it was supposed to be phased out, and I thought about a five-year phase-out plan while we're giving them that opportunity to transition to a Medicaid program, maybe the $1,400 we give in January of 2024, and then over the next five years, phase it out while they're getting that time, maybe $1,000 after that, and then maybe $750 the year after that, down to $500, and then to $250 to phase it out because we're going to continue to see this plan come before us for the 317 that remain in the program into perpetuity until we, as a council, decide that we're not going to do it. So, this would give everyone an opportunity to find alternative ways to transition into a Medicaid program. So, I'm agreement with the $1,500 one-time supplement and the $1,400 HRA agreement dispersment in January of 2024, and for council to come up with a five-year phase-out.
Okay.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Ms. Terry, just want to make sure clear. When you say that the 1,500 is going to all of the retirees, does that include those in the Virginia Retirement System?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's not going to all the retirees?
Just the legacy system retirees, FNP.
And so, why isn't it going to those in the Virginia Retirement System?
It was never offered to them, the 1,500. It was never, well, oh, okay, let me fix that. The 1,500 is offered to FNP, the legacy system, because those were the Portsmouth retirees. VRS gives COLA increases every year because that system is 100% funded. So, they are not a part of the legacy system. They are active retirement system, but they are fully funded. So, their money comes from what they've contributed and what the state allocates to VRS.
So, what about the retirees who were in these systems, who were able to go to other localities, work and retire and get retirements under those plans? So, they're getting retirements from those cities as well as Portsmouth in addition to $1,500?
Correct. So, if you are a part of the legacy system, you got an additional $200 or $100 a month on top of your retirement until you turn 65. So, that was the lucrative system that we have or in or had, have. So, when you turn 65, you're not, so if you're a firefighter or you're a firefighter, so if you're a firefighter and you leave here, say you join at 18, you left at 40, you can go and receive another retirement plan, insurance and everything they benefit as long as you stay in that system for five years, which means if you were one of the people that qualified, you know, when they started doing this, then you would not only receive the 1,400 from us, but you're receiving whatever retirement benefit from wherever else you decided to go and retire from.
Which that system could have a COLA increase in it.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm saying. The inequity of the system is that those who are in the Virginia Retirement System, if they left and went to retire, went to another locality to work, they would have to fall back into the Virginia Retirement System. There would be no two retirements plus a $1,500 COLA increase coming from Portsmouth. And this is inequity built into this that I believe was intentional. And I'm not going to perpetuate it by trying to buy into what is being presented as this one time, but it is something that I think was intentionally done. There have been those who have been left out of it. And when we were looking at this HRA before, there were people who weren't even aware that the supplement existed. And so, how are we going to address that issue of only certain ones know that this is available and have been taken advantage of it? How is that going to be addressed?
So, again, I'm just taking direction, and I'm just giving you information.
No, you're the manager.
Right. I can only take direction. But again, I just want to remind that 317 would be the only ones that receive, the 317, if they're still here, would only be the only ones that were eligible to receive this benefit, if I'm not, if that was correct. So, you already had to have been in that retirement HRA plan to be able to receive it again, if that was what was provided to me. So, the new people don't get it. So, if you've met, if you're 65 and you've met the new, you met the requirements of being Medicare eligible, you don't get this. It only goes to the ones who were in the system prior to us ending it in '21. That's what's been approached, or that's how I provided this information. So, again, I've been very clear in my position, but I'm here to do and be directed by council so that I can budget and make provisions for whatever it is that council has decided, will decide, and have me move forward.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the information that you've presented consistently. I think that the citizens who are listening to it and haven't really digested the context out of which all of this occurred, it appears to be some type of act that persons who are in need and have been overlooked over the years, it's more of an emotional type of plea. And I think that when you look at the context out of which all of this system was initially created historically, that it was created for the benefit of a select few. And so, I'm not in favor. I'm in favor of the recommendation that you have consistently made over the years about not funding these.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Terry, I think that number, that 317, is probably less due to obvious reasons, unfortunately. And I think when it was kicked off in April of 2015, I think that number was probably closer to 400, actually, at that time.
353.
Yeah. But my colleague mentioned disadvantage of the VRS system. Actually, it's an advantage to an employee in the VRS system because they can take their employment to whatever city, and their retirement is not affected. Unfortunately, for the cities, VRS means that we can recruit employees from other cities, and they can get our employees, so we can be this back and forth. Whereas, the closed systems at the time, you know, that was Portsmouth Supplemental, Police and Fire. If you went to another city, you were at the mercy as to whatever their retirement system was at that time. So, you know, there were advantages and disadvantages. And I think, keep referring to the select few that it benefited, probably the ones that benefited, they bailed out of the closed system shortly after or shortly before it was closed because at that time, some people could bail out about 75% of their salary. But VRS is what it is. And Police and Fire and even Portsmouth Supplemental back in the day, they were getting a COLA. In fact, I was on the council that established the COLA for retirees because each year, they would have to come before this council and literally beg for a COLA or beg for a salary increase. So, we established a policy, and I think that was written down in ordinance, perhaps, but they would get 50% of what active employees got at that time. But subsequent city manager decided that that didn't work and did away with it, which I didn't support that, but that's history. But thank you again.
Councilman Tillitt, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Manager Terry, so my sentiments are identical with Councilman Hugel's. As a new council member, there's nothing in writing. There's nothing but hearsay. The city says this, retirees say this. And all I know is, we're told that there's no ordinance. We're told that there's nothing in writing, but then we're going on saying, well, this policy was created where only certain numbers of people were able to be in the program. And then we just received this letter that shows a four-year 25% reduction. Well, if there was no ordinance or no plans, then how do we come up with this?
Budget.
And then, if we're going to do a 25% reduction, well, then in 2021, which would have been the last year with a $333 HRA funding, but council did not go with this agreement. So, to me, the agreement was tossed away because the city didn't stay true to their own agreement. And so, that gives me heartburn that we're not staying true to something that we created based on something that is hearsay. Number two, when, it seems like the city, in my opinion, has a reputation of just throwing people on the street. And when people are, they're making their life based on their money that they're receiving. And so, from year to year, I'm guessing or not, if I'm going to get a HRA funding, if I'm going to get a COLA increase. And to Councilman Hugel's, I mean, not Councilman Hugel, Councilman Moody- And to Councilman Heegles, I mean, not Councilman Heegle, Councilman Moody's point, VRS does have its advantages. Being a person who was a part of VRS, I worked for the school division and also for the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so I was able to transfer my, transfer my retirement. But also, VRS retirees also get COLA increases. Well, if I'm not a part of the VRS system, then I don't get those COLA increases. So this is those individuals' COLA increases. And so the VRS retirees are getting a benefit that the members of the legacy systems are not. And so that's what council gets, has the right to decide on. And so I would be in favor of having a ordinance put in place that addresses if we're going to do a five-year reduction, that we do that. But we need to stay true to whatever the agreement was and make sure that we stay true to our word. Because at the end of the day, they're saying a select few, but VRS are still getting their COLA increases. They just got one in twenty twenty-two of a three-point-five percent increase. And so I would be in support of the fifteen hundred dollar supplement as well as the HRA for fourteen hundred.
If I may, I just want to correct you because I don't want you to put bad information out there. So the reason that there is no ordinance is because it's budgeted. So every year, the budget, they would include it in the budget and council would make a determination if they wanted to move it in or out. And that is because if there's no money to fund it, we are not obligated to be, to actually cover that cost because again, it's an additional benefit for retirees. That's why you don't see an ordinance because it's not an ordinance, because it was a budgeted item. Say for instance, we run into a snag and we don't have any money. So they would not obligate the city to that. Only council-approved budget would cover that. That's why there is no ordinance for that additional benefit. The reason it became reduced over time is because council had the authority to do that. Because again, it's not an ordinance, it is not a normal benefit. This is in addition to. Okay. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Also, as it relates to throwing people on the street, not sure what that is, but I just wanted to make sure that nobody thinks that they're going to be thrown on the street because of retirement benefit that is hopeful. I, I just didn't know where that came from, so I just wanted to make sure we're good.
It came from, because when a person has an agreement or an understanding that that's what they're going to receive and that's not what they're going to receive, to me, that is, that is throwing somebody on the street. Because that's, you're, you're, you're planning, your budget planning, like we're in budget season now. People are dependent upon money that they receive. And so if I am going from year to year, guessing or not whether I'm going to get it, well, to me, you're, you're throwing me out this year. Next year, you might bring me back, but next year, you're going to throw me back out again. And so that's where the five-year, if we're going to try to phase it out, well, that's where an agreement comes and we're going to say a set number of years is what it's going to be. I shouldn't have to guess from year to year whether or not I'm going to get it or not.
And the thing about it is whenever we do an ordinance, say if council, because this is not a part of the budget, it would have to be an ordinance or an amendment to the proposed budget. So that would be documented. Hence, the concern was there was nothing truly documented as it came along for the HRA. Again, I just want to be clear. It was something that was budgeted from year to year, just like a salary, just like your increases. These are things that are budgeted from year to year because we may not be able to give a GWI, a general wage increase to our employees depending on if we don't have the funding. So HRA was set aside for that purpose. If there's no funding, it won't be approved in the budget. So again, I'm taking the direction of council because council has the authority to direct me to do that. But we didn't budget for the HRA. We budgeted for the fifteen hundred stipend and not the HRA because again, you could shoot down the stipend, you could shoot down anything. But now I'm going to have to, if it is the desire of council to have us move forward, then I have to find funding to cover that cost of the HRA because again, we didn't budget for it. We have to reduce something else to cover the cost of this HRA.
And, and my last question is in regards to the ordinance section thirty dash one twenty-two, where it mentions notwithstanding the foregoing and no eventual city council approval authorized adjustments for retirements unless it's at eighty percent. In order for us to vote on these two items, would we need to amend that? Because that means we're going against our ordinance.
No, let me explain. An ordinance is a ordinance is a ordinance. That's why we call it one time. Whenever there's something that go, that is in addition to something. Say we're not, we have agreed not to fund the retirement system, any additional supplement, if the retirement system has not met its funding capacity of eighty percent. So that's why we're not considering it a COLA, which would be ongoing. Because that would then determine a change in your salary. So what we're retirement benefit salary, retirement benefit. So when you do it as an amendment to your budget and call it a consideration of a one-time stipend, those things are now added. You don't change your ordinance because funding is funding. But what council does is determine, can we add additional money out of the budget to cover a cost for a one-time, not recurring, a one-time payment? So if it were a recurring payment, then council would then have to amend the ordinance to adjust that. But again, I would not recommend or suggest that due to the funding constraints on your retirement system plan. Because again, we paid twenty-plus million dollars every year to fund just the legacy system. So by adding a COLA or going against that would now increase our obligation to the retirement system. And that's why we're not considering a COLA because the ordinance dictates an eighty percent actuarial value funded. Just wanted to be clear, just because I'm sure other people didn't understand that as well.
Now, do we know when the last time we've hit the eighty percent threshold?
We were mighty close. But again, it's based on market. We're at sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent now. That's why I suggested or recommended this one time. Because again, I could have recommended that we put an additional one-point-five million dollars into the system to bring it up. But because market is market, I thought it would be best because in the hands of our retirees versus having it sit and it may lose funding because of the market.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Heegles, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to kind of pile on to Councilman Tillage's point, who was piling on to my point, we have ten other things to consider tonight. And every one of those has a story. But the stories need to get documented somewhere, somehow. And if it's going to be documented as part of the budget ordinance, kind of the overarching budget ordinance, somehow we got to write in there what we mean. So Starbase, we're going to approve your three hundred thousand, but it's this year, this year only. You're on your own next year. If you want to come back next year, up to you, but we ain't making any promises. Or whatever it is that, that we're, that we're intending to agree to when we put it into the budget. So that when things like this happen and, and somebody actually writes down a phased plan, that it's written in a way that some new guy, five years down the road, can come back and figure out what the heck happened. Because this memo was interesting information provided ten minutes ago. Would have been helpful to have this as part of the record back in twenty fifteen or sixteen, I guess, October of twenty sixteen, when somebody wrote this. So figuring out how we take all of these things and document them well enough so that not only do we know what we just did, but, but forevermore, people can come back and say, I had a question about that. Oh, yeah, okay, it's, it's crystal clear now because they wrote it down, what they intended.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what you have every year is a proposed budget.
Yep.
What is solid about your budget, okay, this is not new for you because you did that admirable thing. So now, every year you get spending. They come and they ask you what you want to do. So you put, every, for example, there was a year where defense spending was up. You can buy ships, boats, whatever. There was a year they decided not to fund certain programs, a disaster program, this program. So every year you have to make a determination based on the needs, based on the environment. So there is nothing other than that's, that's solid. We propose a budget that addresses the needs of the next year. And so there may be funding, there may be a change in the environment, anything could happen. So that's why you have these anomalies from year to year based on their environment and based on what your needs are for the city. Next year, we may not have a need for debt. Next year, we may not have, so I don't have to fund that payment. So the reason that, and you know this, but the reason that I want to just explain it for the citizens so that they're clear, things come up based on the needs. Starbase came up. The reason I looked at Starbase or we tried to make sure that we, we could try to work some things to get it in because I know council has a desire for our children to have additional accelerated education. We know that's missing, so we wanted to bridge the gap. I recognize that there are some mental health requests, not requests, some mental health needs. So we wanted to make sure we funded those. There are going to be things that you're going to get from year to year and to ensure. Now what's, what's solid is you have to take care of your active employees now. And so as costs continue, as the labor force continues, as retention continues, we've done things for police that we've never even thought were going to ever be possible because of the environment and the need right now. So I want to be clear that your budget changes based on the needs of the city. So that's why you may not see a five-year plan. But again, you may, this council can't bind the council that's going to come after you, hence this situation of what they don't deem as the need or the necessity at that time. So if you want to put a five-year phase out, council would have to make that determination. Our legal, our, our city attorney would go back, create the ordinance that would design that if that is the desire of council. I just don't want anybody to believe that, you know, we're not looking far ahead. We are. And the things that require us to determine how we're going to fund something, we make sure we put it in there and address it. Other things come based on the needs, based on council's request and the desires of council.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Terry, the letter that is being referenced, do you have a copy of that? Well, I know you know.
I know of it, yes.
This, this isn't an act of council.
No, that was the act of, of HR and John Rowe, I think, but that wasn't an act of this council, of course.
Right. Nor was it, nor was it an act of the previous councils that followed this date.
Right.
Yeah. So this letter is constantly put up as if it has some legitimacy for future years. And so I just want to make clear because the council person are referencing it, but it's not an act that council did. I don't want it to be put out as if council offered something and is now reneging on it. Because that, that is not what, what occurred at all.
Right. So the way I'm looking at this exercise, and again, I don't want to eat into any more time, but I can go pretty quick, is I'm looking at this from the standpoint of right now. So I just need council to tell me what to do now. You don't have to tell me right now, but as part of the budget process, I'm going to need to know what direction because the, we're in a proposed budget and legal has to write that whatever information or whatever ordinance pertains to it. So this was for me to give you the information to make a decision, no more, no less. We can come back next week and go through all the list of things, but I wanted to run through them so that when we come back, because we only have one more council meeting prior to the adoption. No, we don't, maybe not, May ninth, okay. So we're going to have to have a special meeting. Oh, next week, May, next week is the eighth? Next, next, next.
The next meeting.
Next, okay. What?
So, so, so if.
Please.
If I could, a couple of things, I, I've listened to my colleagues and you, you, you know, I, I hear a lot of things about this HRA that, that, that we created, this health reimbursement arrangement. That's the technical name for it. It is a health reimbursement arrangement. It's not an agreement and, and that's the technical name. The, the challenge that, that I see is that our primary responsibility as council is to ensure that the retirement is adequately funded so that the last person that goes to get that benefit is able to get that benefit. You intro, you introduced all the information why that is. The thing about the HRA, which, which, which I can't support, is that the city did, did make an agreement with those folks who were post-sixty-five that they would pay amount of money for a specific amount of time. And those individuals that qualified received those dollars. It is not fiscally prudent or responsible for council to continue to fund a health reimbursement arrangement. Now, we can argue the particulars on it, whether it was a gentleman's agreement or what have you, but those retirees received the benefit and the city paid that benefit. And it appears that it was also a phased-out benefit. And we can argue that point too, and maybe that's another discussion. But at the end of the day, what we are trying to do, you heard the manager, what we're trying to do is get to a point where we can do what is equitable amongst our retirees at the present point. And what is equitable at the present point is what the recommendation is. Now certainly, we can choose to fund the HRA, but I can't support funding the HRA. And I'm being very transparent about it. Those individuals received those dollars and they would lobby every year to council to get those dollars for an HRA. And in many cases, it would get approved. The city can no longer operate under that type of process. And although it is not probably the answer a lot of people want to hear, it is what is fair and equitable. And those individuals that retired received a benefit. And as a result of that, it has come to an end. That's why in twenty twenty-one, we chose as a council to no longer provide that HRA benefit. So I just wanted to share that as a point of, of our discussion. And if there is a, a request from my colleagues on council to call for in a consensus of any of these items, then bring it forward.
Can I, okay, I was just going to go through the next thing so that we can come back and then just do it all at once.
That's fine. We can do that at a, we can call, we can call for the consensus after you finish. So go ahead and proceed with your items.
So I'm, it's only going to take a few minutes. This is the ARPA status update. I've been working with council, providing information, and it's just going to take me a second to walk through. So for ARPA funds received, we've received fifty-six-point-eight-four million, which we all are aware. The funds spent or obligated to date is twenty-two million. The ARPA projects that are on the way that will be shovel-started or just starting within, are going to start within the next twelve months, that is thirty-point-seven million dollars. ARPA unfunded obligation is a three-point-eight-five million. And the reason that those dollars are there is twofold. The disabled veterans tax relief is something that we budgeted with ARPA dollars, but because we've already gotten through this budget, it's going to end in a new one. This would just carry on until those funds were needed as to supplement whatever was over. In other words, every year we are budgeting for this, it goes over. I think everybody who's a disabled veteran that knows they can be exempt, has called each other in Portsmouth. And so that has tripled. So those dollars were set aside to give us a little cushion just in case it went over because it was allowable. But what I'm asking, that if any funds are unobligated toward the end, that we use these dollars toward the new safety complex. Again, we have needs in the city. This would definitely help relieve some of the costs associated. And then what we're finding is because of the projects and because of the time, because of inflation, some of the projects have gone over a little. So this would help us kind of balance that out without having to look at the general fund to take up any difference or absorb any costs because those ARPA dollars would be there. That's pretty much. And I really didn't need a consensus. I just wanted to share this information because I thought it was good information. And you asked me. We have Trey, 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 oh. So we have twenty minutes, so y'all, you know, Trey can go through it, but I just. So we have 20 minutes, so y'all, you know, Trey can go through it, but I just, is that okay? It may take us 20 minutes, but 15, Trey, make it fast, come on.
Mr. Burke.
And then we can wrap it up within the last five minutes, and you tell me what to do.
Great. And I get the opportunity to do this as quickly as possible, and I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council, and citizens of Portsmouth. This evening, I'll be presenting a handful of proposed budget changes submitted by City Council members and city staff. Since the budget was proposed nearly a month ago, city staff has received requests from council, new information from the General Assembly, and new pricing information from vendors. To make sure that expenditures more accurately reflect city priorities and new economic realities, we are coming to council for direction. The hope is that we can identify city council consensus around these items and update the fiscal year 2024 budget, so that city council and citizens know that all the city's needs are being met. Note that some of the items will have recommendations, while others will not. This is not, sorry, this is not based on any kind of recommendation. No recommendation does not mean not recommended. We will review the budgetary impacts of all proposals by outlining the increase or decrease to revenues or expenditures. Do we have any questions before I begin? I'll pause. Okay. The city manager's budget can absorb a one-time real property tax credit of 5 cents without impacting city services. While there will be impacts to the city's fund balances, the revenues projected by real property tax revenue, combined with all other revenues, adequately support the initiatives included in the manager's proposed budget. A consensus to provide a one-time tax credit will result in an additional ordinance adopting the credit in addition to the ordinance council would typically adopt for the tax rate. This item has been discussed in city council meetings and the city council retreat. Staff is asking if there's agreement in submitting the 5-cent additional tax, excuse me, the additional 5-cent tax credit ordinance for council approval. I'm just, okay. As the citywide reassessment is ongoing, council may find it advisable to reduce the projection for real property tax revenues and provide a fund balance reservation for fiscal year 2024. Keep in mind that fund balance is based on actual revenues and expenditures, not the budget. So this is a change made on paper that will not impact the bottom line after the end of the fiscal year 2024, nor will it impact the tax rate or the proposed tax credit. Those all will stay the same. What this will do is ensure that the budget is structurally balanced if the reassessed land book comes in lower than we currently anticipate. This is a one-time mechanism to address a one-time situation, and is not, again, does not impact actual revenue generation. This was presented to city council at its retreat, and staff is asking if there's agreement on this item at the end of the presentation. Starbase Victory is a nonprofit founded in 2002, we've heard all this before. This proposal has been discussed at city council retreat and will increase, excuse me, and will increase the line item by $300,000. It will be funded by projecting more casino gaming revenue in fiscal year 2024. The Hampton Roads Alliance is a 13 locality regional partnership providing economic development services to cities. While the alliance primarily markets the region and its benefits to businesses looking to relocate, it also serves as a forum for regional initiatives and may aid our Economic Development Department in attracting specific interested businesses. This proposal was discussed at the city council retreat and will add $115,000 to the Economic Development Department and the General Fund. It will pay for that by also increasing casino revenues. We went over this, and I got, when I was messing up, that's the arrangement we were talking about earlier. And that we've budgeted that for $500,000, and it would be a transfer from the General Fund to the Health Insurance Fund. All right. Certain employee salaries are primarily funded by the State General Assembly through the Virginia Compensation Board. These employees are primarily located in the offices of the City Treasurer, Clerk of Circuit Court, Commissioner of the Revenue, Commonwealth Attorney, and the Portsmouth Sheriff. The State Compensation Board determines pay for those employees by certain staffing metrics, and then reimburses the city for salary expenses in accordance with those pay determinations. Staff had anticipated a 5 percent increase for employees as determined by the Compensation Board. However, we have learned of an initiative in the General Assembly currently to increase that by an additional 2 percent, bringing the total general wage increase for those employees to 7 percent. Staff is including this item to make council aware that this issue is on the horizon and may come something that staff comes back to you with after it's adopted by the General Assembly. Should the General Assembly pass an additional pay increase, staff may bring forward an additional 2 percent wage increase for city employees. This will be funded by investment income, as this increased greatly due to higher interest rates. The higher the interest rates, the higher the city's projected revenue comes for investments. Again, we're including this, so you know that it's out there. And if that state does it, excuse me, if the General Assembly does adopt the 7 percent increase, then staff may come back to you at that time. All right, these last two changes came from staff. The first is an additional $590,000 for mowing contracts. These increases were necessitated by, we put out an RFP, the bids came in higher than anticipated. Also, when we put out the RFP, the scope of work changed, because we've added grounds to that at council direction. We will be looking for consensus on this item this evening. Another one, so again, we put out the bids, or we put out an RFP for prices for solid waste vehicles, garbage trucks. Those came in much higher than anticipated. We're not asking any changes at this time, however, we do want to let you know that there may be a change. We're going to evaluate, looking at a leasing program to fund those vehicles. And we may be coming back to you with that, that will probably be tied with the full presentation. We did want to let you know that it's out there. All right.
Mr. Burke, are you done, sir?
Other than that, no, sir, that's fine, we're good.
Once again, on these particular items and the items that we discussed before, why don't we go ahead and go through each item and ask for consensus by a show of hands? And the manager will take note of those items. On the two items, as it relates to the 1,500-dollar one-time stipend, I think we need to take those two separately, probably from a consensus standpoint, the stipend 1,500 and the 1,400-dollar HRA. Are we in agreement with that?
Can we do electronically, Mayor?
No, no, we're going to do a show of hands, as to not confuse everyone. So I'm going to go through the items, and then we will proceed forward. The first item.
Mr. Mayor, before you do, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
In regard to the HRA issue you raised, is that the same issue on Slide 7, consensus item 5, retiree health savings, is that?
From a budgetary standpoint, it's the same.
So that's the, this is the HRA issue?
That's the funding, yes, sir.
That's, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Hugel, did you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir, I do. So we're about to have a public hearing on the budget after we consider these items for consensus of the council. Should we consider postponing the consensus discussion at this point until after that public hearing?
So the, I'll let the city attorney speak, but the reason that I wanted to get some clarification is because everything is going to be contingent on this 5-cent credit, because if I don't know what that is, I can't do anything else. I'm stuck. So again, I'll let the city attorney. So, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we move forward?
So if we consider that item for consensus now, so that folks who are coming up to speak during the public hearing know that it's our intent to lower the property tax bill, then perhaps we can consider all the other consensus items after we've heard from the public on whatever issues they want to bring to us?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak out of, sorry, clerk.
Thank you, Madam Manager. If the question is whether this council can then defer its consensus until, vote on consensus until they hear from the public, is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
That is possible. However, I don't want you to be confused about what you're going to be doing. You will be simply deciding on whether you're consenting to the manager, including it in the budget, for a vote later on. This is not, that will not be the official vote on the budget.
Yes, ma'am, understood.
So if everybody understands that, then we can do it that way.
And I chose, maybe we chose the wrong word, consensus, but I just need everybody to agree. That's why I use consensus, because I really need to know where you want me to go, because if I need to make any adjustments based on, just like the HRA, I'm giving, what we did is provide some information that could say, this is what you requested, yea or nay. So if you say no, then I know I don't have to move any funds. If you say yes, I need to go back and get those things done. Because again, they weren't in the, that wasn't in the proposed. Starbase was not in the proposed. So I need to know what you want me to do, so it would allow me to go back to the drawing board and make some adjustments to pay for it.
Yes, ma'am. So I understand, we don't want to leave here tonight without clearing all this up. My suggestion only is that we allow for the public to have their public hearing time and then run through the items that you proposed that will help you settle the movement of budget items around. And so, Mr. Mayor, if it's the consensus of my colleagues, I would propose that we only address the tax credit item, which is the first consensus item now, and that we postpone discussion or consensus on the other nine items until after the public hearing and during our council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And what I would like to, before we move forward with the consensus on your request, I would ask that our city clerk has asked for the floor, so, Madam, you have the floor.
Members of the City Council, as far as order is concerned, if you can defer all of your consensus, so we have all of them together, hear all of your public hearings, close them out, and then at that time, you all can do your consensus on the items. But I recommend keeping them all together versus breaking them up.
Okay.
And that way, everything stays together.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is that agreeable to the body? All in favor? Then, as requested, we will defer the consensus items until after the public hearing. Madam Manager, do you have any further presentations?
No, what I, I want to go real quick through the CMR summary, so that you're aware of what you'll be addressing in the work session. So the first one is from planning, 23-150, I'm sorry, in the agenda, I forgot what it was, agenda. City managers' report on the agenda. Okay, so the first would be, it's a grant, it's for 1.5 million dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing, and we're just asking a consensus on approving that partnership program grant, home grant. The second item is for the Sheriff's Department, 23-151. You all had a consensus and approved that grant funding last week or week before. There were additional dollars associated with that, because the state just approved that grant, and this is for outfitting. I've submitted something to you all as well. So this is just an additional $140,000 from the Commonwealth of Virginia. 23-152 is for public utilities, and it's authorizing the conveyance of a utility easement so that we could, for the Holland Road to City of Suffolk, for adherence of the public, oh, I'm sorry, pump station, just to extend the project, so we could move forward. 23-153 is through economic development, and it's just adopting a resolution for some property to be sold through the economic development. Okay, and that's it for my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any city council liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, that concludes our public work session. This will be, this meeting will be adjourned, and our regular session will start at 7:00 PM.